Okay, it is now seven thirty, the appointed time for the Temple City Regular Council Meeting of May sixth. Could we have a roll call, please?
Council members, sequence.
Present.
Council member Viscara.
Here.
Council member Yu.
Here.
Mayor Protim Chavez.
Here.
Mayor Blum.
Here. For the invocation this evening, we have Pastor Darrell Kelty, who's been with us here before. He's with the Community at Christ Church located at ninety-four sixty-eight Broadway. He's been pastor there for eight years, been very active in our city here, and I thank you, and please rise and join us in the invocation.
Oh, our God, oh, our great Creator, we group of failed humans seek your guidance this evening as we try our best to do that which is best for the city of Temple City. May we look to you for wisdom and direction that the reports we hear this evening, we may do so with wisdom and knowledge and understanding. May the decisions we make be done with what is good, best, and better for the citizens and the people of Temple City. We would pray to all those citizens here gathered and in the community as a whole of this city and for the greater world community that they may become more fully aware of the duties and responsibilities that come from with living in a free and society, that we need and must learn to live with each other and with ourselves and with the environment in peace, that indeed we might be living in a world maybe not better for ourselves but for our children and our children's children and our children's children for generations to come. This we do pray in all humility. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, freedom, and justice for all. Okay, we're now in item five on the agenda, ceremonial matters. We have a presentation of the Pet of the Month. I'd like to call Cindy Rigney, the new president of the Board of Directors, to present the Pet of the Month, and while I'm doing that, Pat Brayer, who was the former president, I believe has taken a position in Tucson, Arizona.
That is correct. She has taken a wonderful job in Tucson where she has always wanted to retire, even though she's not retiring yet, so it was a great move for Pat, and we're all very, very happy for her. We'll miss her terribly, but it's a good move.
Okay, she must like heat.
Well, yeah. Coming from originally Pennsylvania.
It's a dry heat. Okay. All right, who do you have here, Cindy?
Who we have today? This is Queen Latifah. Queen Latifah came to us, an animal control officer picked her up in the middle of March, corner of Baldwin and Longdon, and she weighed in at almost twelve pounds, so hence her name. We've got her down to a fighting weight now. As an eight-year-old, she's considered a senior, but she is very sweet, very loving, wants to be with you all the time, is good on walks, I've just proven she's good in the car, so she's a real love bug, and obviously she's not a big barker, at least not yet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone interested in adopting a pet, either Queen Latifah or you can go to the San Gabriel Humane Society and see what other options you have. Okay, I'd like to move to item six on the agenda, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address the city council is highlighted on the first page of the agenda. This section is limited to thirty minutes maximum, and we're asking that anybody presenting have three minutes. Okay, I have no one here. Mary?
I was in the hospital last time I was in the hospital and I should have been here.
Okay, line up to the microphone so we can all hear you.
Mary Kukakal, Temple City. I want to speak the, this time, I'll probably speak again when you have the dialeride thing. I just want you to know what happened yesterday. I called the dialeride number in the morning, nobody answered the phone, I waited for two, three minutes, nobody ever came on, I waited about another ten minutes, I did the same thing, and nobody picked up the phone, I waited another, maybe a couple of minutes, then I hung up. I called a third time, I waited about fifteen minutes figuring, you know, nobody comes on, it rings and rings. The fourth time I called, somebody came on and say, hang on for five minutes. So I said, what do you think I've been doing the last three times I called? You want me to hang on here for five minutes? So they say, just a minute, we'll get a dispatcher. So they called somebody in Temple City, a dispatcher, and then I had a problem trying to get a ride.
Is this, do you want to talk about this on the other agenda item when this comes up?
Yes, but I can't say everything, I just want to say this now because this happened yesterday. And then when I was dropped off a block from where I, I had to walk because the driver doesn't want to pull up. So they dropped me off, you know, where Naomi is, back of Duarte, in that complex there where my doctor is, I had to walk a block from where she dropped me off at the parking lot. She didn't want to go up. Some of the drivers, Fernando, our best driver, he pulls up there, drops you off there and picks you up.
What's the reason why they, they refuse?
Because they don't want to. They don't know how to, according to them, drive the vehicle, then they shouldn't be driving. If the other two drivers can do it, the other ones don't. They don't help me, I can fall on my face trying to get up those steps with my bag that I have to carry with me. They don't help me. Fernando gets off, make sure that I don't fall backwards. The drivers are not good, they don't care about us, and I was so upset in the hospital that they want a contract from you. For what? For the crappy service we got? And it's still bad, they didn't, what Jose told them to do, they still haven't done it. Whatever you do, if you give them a contract, I'll do everything in my power to do something to this city that you're going to do that and give us this crappy service.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mary.
They're talking about a different scenario.
I don't care what you're talking about.
But you're Kai-hyde, too.
I wasn't here. I want you to know what I go through. You're going to have the dialeride people, they need a contract. I wasn't here last Tuesday.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd care to speak during public comments? Okay, public comments are closed, we're going to move to the item seven, the consent calendar. I'm going to ask that item seven F and seven G be pulled so we can have a staff presentation, unless there's any others, did anybody like to have addressed separately? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Moving. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent calendar is unanimously approved. Let's go to item seven F on the agenda. It's the Acceptance of Plan, Specification, and Estimates for State-Funded Capital Improvement Program Project for the Implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan, the Installation of twelve point six miles of Class Two and Class Three bicycle lanes. We have a staff report, please.
Mayor Blum and council members, good evening. In March twenty thirteen, the city was awarded four hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars by Caltrans to construct approximately twelve point six centralized miles of bicycle lanes throughout the city. In July twenty thirteen, the city hired Ely Farah Incorporated to prepare plan specifications and estimates package for the project. The package is now complete, and staff is ready to advertise for construction bids. Staff will conduct a review and cost analysis of all submitted bids and make a recommendation to city council for approval and award and contract of the installation of bike lanes. The project will encompass eight streets. Those eight streets are Golden West Avenue, Arden, El Monte, Longdon, Lemon, Oak Avenue, Freer, and Olive. As you can see in the map behind you, these are the streets that are slated for improvements minus Las Tunas Boulevard. Las Tunas Boulevard was omitted from these improvements pending any, any physical improvements that are done to Las Tunas from the Las Tunas Beautification Project. Before you, the city council has requested to accept the package so that staff can proceed with the advertisement for construction bids. The total cost of this project is five hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars in Caltrans funds, and fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in general funds. And with that, myself and city engineer Ali Qayir will take any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Sagan, just want to emphasize that one question I asked you before, and I think people need to understand that there will not be any loss of street parking.
That is, that is correct, council member Yu, there will not be any loss of street parking.
Right, in case somebody is concerned about that. The, of the, of the eight streets, seven of them will be Class Three, which is the posting signs essentially and alerting the cars that the road needs to be shared.
Correct.
With bicycles, and then El Monte Avenue will be at Class Two, that is, have a separate striped bike lane.
Correct. That will connect to, at its northern borders to the city of Arcadia, and we are in discussions with the city of Arcadia. There's one little small stretch there, and we will be working with Arcadia to ensure that, that one block is done cooperatively between the city of Temple City and Arcadia.
In other words, they can ride from the High, Arcadia High School all the way down to Lower Souza on bike lane.
Correct.
Class Two bike lanes.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? I think the reason this was pulled from the agenda, just so everybody knows that we're making progress on this, we adopted a bike master plan a while back, we did get the state funding to move forward, and this is the first step in moving forward, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item F.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item is unanimously carried. We go to item G, seven G. This is the Acceptance of Plan, Specification, and Estimates for State-Funded Capital Improvement Program Project for Construction of forty-five Separate Improvements Around Nine School Sites. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor Blum, council members. In June two thousand and twelve, the city was awarded four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars by Caltrans to construct forty-five Separate Improvements at nine school sites throughout the city. In April twenty thirteen, the city fully executed the administrating agency state master agreement and program supplement for reimbursement of expenses for the project. In July of twenty thirteen, the, the city hired Ely Farah to prepare plans, specifications, and estimates package for the project. The PSNE package is now complete, and staff is ready to advertise for construction of bids. Subsequently, staff will conduct review and cost analysis of all submitted bids and make a recommendation to city council for approval of an award of contract for the installation of those improvements. These improve, these forty-five improvements include construction of sidewalks and curb ramps, installation of solar-powered pedestrian activated light, lighted crosswalks, speed feedback signs, flashing stop beacons, and various signs and street striping. The nine schools to receive these improvements are Longdon Elementary, Oak Avenue Intermediate, Temple City High School, Emperor Elementary, First Lutheran Christian School, La Rosa Elementary, Cloverly Elementary, Clementson Elementary, and Longley Way. As you can see, or eight of the nine schools are in the city of Temple City with one being in the city of Arcadia. However, that school does benefit Temple City residents and students. The city has requested, requested to accept the package so that staff can proceed with the advertisement of construction bids and have construction done during the summer months when children are not in school. The total cost of this project is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, four hundred and thirty-seven, four hundred and thirty-one thousand of which is in Caltrans funds and fifty seven, fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of city general funds. And with that, myself and city engineer Ali Qayir will take any questions you may have.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, again, this is moving forward with the project, we've been cooperatively working with the school district over the last few years, this is one of the outcomes of that, and we just felt it was important that everybody know that we're moving forward, and there'll be work around the schools this summer and making it safer for the students. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of item G.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item seven G is unanimously carried. Okay, we now move to item eight, public hearings. We've changed our agenda format a little bit, we're putting public hearings sort of together, so we now have a category for public hearings, so item eight A is consideration to increase the allocation for the federally funded community development block grant project, man, they got long names, for downtown parking lots and Temple City Boulevard accessibility improvements for the American with Disability Act project. Have staff report, please.
Good evening, mayor, council members, members of the audience. Tonight, we have before you consideration to increase community development block grant funds, also known as CDBG funds, for a downtown parking lot in Temple City Boulevard, American with Disability Acts, otherwise known as ADA Improvement Project. For the past couple of years, the city has tried to deal with excess CDBG funds. On March twelfth, two thousand and thirteen, the city and CDC staff met with the CDC in trying to go over the current projects, upcoming fiscal year projects, and the possibility of creating two new ADA improvement projects in the city. On June eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, the city council conducted a public hearing and approved the creation of the two new ADA improvement projects. In January two thousand and fourteen, the city, or CDC informed city staff that the bid package for the project, or the two projects were, was approved and ready to be published. The city did publish the bid notice for the project two times in the Temple City Tribune, and the bid notice was also published on the city's website, and also the city engineer requested that the bid notice be published in various contractor trade publications. On February eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the city conducted a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting for the project to answer any questions because the city, the project is utilizing CDBG funds, which are federal funds, it was subject to the Davis Bacon Act, which is section three. On March fourth, two thousand and fourteen, the city clerk conducted a bid opening for the two projects, and the city received three bids, Unique Performance Construction, FS Construction, and El Camino Construction Engineering, and the lowest bid received was for two hundred thousand. Staff consulted with the CDC because the project was higher than the engineer's estimate, so staff concluded that it was necessary to go back before the council to increase the funds for the project, and we're proposing that you, the city council, consider utilizing unallocated funds, which are programs and not currently programmed for, currently not programmed. On April third, two thousand and fourteen, the city published a notice that the city council would be considering the amendment for the two projects in the Temple City Tribune. It touched on it originally, that the city's engineer, original estimate for the project was two hundred and twenty thousand for both of the projects. The bid came in at two hundred thousand, and that did not include the ten percent contingency for additional twenty thousand, and also the standard twenty percent soft costs, which is for project management, labor compliance, which is typical for public and, public work projects. So the new total project amount is two hundred and sixty thousand for both the projects. So rather using general funds to cover the four hundred, or forty thousand dollar difference, staff has identified the unallocated CG, CDBG funds as eligible funding source. So the city council has requested to approve the allocation of forty thousand of the city's unallocated CDBG funds, which will allow the project to move forward in addressing ADA deficiencies in the downtown area. Furthermore, it would assist in the city reducing its excess CDBG funds. So the city currently has a balance of unallocated CDBG funds of eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. This proposed appropriation would involve forty thousand of that, so we would have a balance left over of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And twenty thousand eight hundred would go towards the downtown parking lot improvements, bringing the new total amount to one hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred, and appropriating nineteen thousand two hundred dollars worth of the unallocated funds for the Temple City Boulevard project, bringing that total to one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions about me. Do we need CDC's approval to increase the budget?
No, it would be up to the city council, and we would just notify them of the action that's taken tonight.
And we don't need to re-bid the project, right, just since?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone care to speak on this, this item? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing. Are there any other council questions? Okay, any council comments before a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to appropriate the, the money as identified in recommendation B.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No one's opposed. Item eight A is unanimously carried. We will now move to unfinished business. Item nine A on the agenda, the approval of agreement for services for Southland Transit Incorporation for Dialeride Transportation Services for fiscal years two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen. I'd like to ask for a staff report, please.
Good evening, council members. At the previous council meeting on April fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, an item was presented to the council to avoid a three-year contract to Southland Transit for the operations of the Dialeride Transportation Services. The item was continued to the meeting tonight with council requesting additional information from staff. The city entered into a three-year agreement with First Transit to manage and operate its senior disabled dialeride program on July first, two thousand and eleven. We are now in the third year of that agreement. Although the agreement does allow for two one-year extensions, staff solicited proposals for dialeride services this year due in part to ongoing concerns and complaints from our current dialeride users. As identified in the staff report, both city staff and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission have met with dialeride users and representatives from First Transit on several occasions over the last two years, trying to address these issues and concerns with the operations of the program. In staff's opinion, those issues have not been adequately addressed as we continue to receive complaints regarding the service, including fourteen since January first of this year. To that end, an RFP was issued in February of this year. Two proposals were received by the March seventh deadline, one from First Transit and the other from Southland Transit. Staff reviewed both proposals for completeness and compliance with the RFP and found both of them to be acceptable. Real quickly, we'll go over the comparisons. This is one of the items that the council requested additional information on last meeting. The price from Southland Transit is higher, about three and a half percent higher than First Transit's price. However, I do want to remind the council that this type of service is not bound by cost. Normally, the contract is awarded to the, the firm that, in staff or council's opinion, would do the, the best job. The contracts in nearby cities is something that is normally considered in this type of service. First Transit provided information on contracts in Pasadena and Paramount. Southland Transit has contracts in Arcadia, Alhambra, El Monte, Balden Park, Glendale, La Puente, Rosemead, and Pico Rivera. In regards to reservations and the call center, Southland Transit did indicate in their proposal that they have translation services provided through a language line that is currently in use in both Alhambra and Arcadia. For both entities, both firms, staff are cross-trained to take reservations. With First Transit, they indicated services provided by three dispatchers. Southland Transit indicated in their proposal additional lines and call takers would be added as needed. Online reservations are not recommended at this time by First Transit. Online reservations are currently used by Southland Transit for their access services, and the telephone service hours are comparable. In regards to dispatch, First Transit, just this last year, started using Simply Transport, a computerized software system. Prior to last year, their dispatch was all done manually. Staff in one of the meetings with First Transit recommended they go to a computerized system, and the city is currently paying an additional three hundred dollars a month for the Simply Transport. Southland Transit has been using Trapeze Pass and a computerized software program for the last fourteen years, which integrates reservations, dispatch, and record-keeping. Both entities indicate they have two-way communications from dispatch to their vehicles, and mobile applications are available. The operation facilities are both local. First Transit has regional offices in El Monte, however, the headquarters are in Ohio, and some of their senior staff are in Arizona. Southland Transit, the entire operations are located in El Monte. Very similar in regards to staff training and driver safety. Both indicate they provide regular staff training meetings, sensitivity training, and employee handbooks, and they have provided that documentation to staff. In regards to the proposed vehicles, both companies are proposing new vehicles, very similar vehicles. Southlands is propane, LNG. First Transit is, had proposed gasoline, but CNG is available. And in regards to marketing awareness and promotions, both of them will work with the city in regards to marketing. With both proposals being acceptable to the city, to the staff, we scheduled interviews with both firms. The interview panel consisted of Parks and Recreation Commissioner Nanette Fish, the administrative coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department Debbie Ingram, and management analyst Wendy Chung. They rated the firms based on the following items that are listed up there, from a scale of one to five, one being poor, five excellent, the overview of services, the company's mission and core values, program administration, customer service and accommodations, knowledge of Temple City's needs, the response to scenarios that were presented, and the overall value. The panel overwhelmingly recommended the city enter into an agreement with Southland Transit. As you can see, we have provided the interview scores and the total possible, out of a total of a hundred and five, Southland Transit scored ninety-seven, First Transit seventy-six. Some of the comments from the interview panel, First Transit focused on the technical side of things, they felt that the past problems that had been discussed were fixed, and they emphasized their role as an extension of the city. In other words, they would do what the city asked them to do. Southland Transit provided a balanced technical offering and customer service. They offered recommendations and solutions in reviewing our current dialeride program. They placed a high emphasis on customer service and proactively proposed modifications or adjustments. Based on the recommendation and the service level provided by First Transit the last three years, staff recommends the city council approve the proposed three-year agreement years, staff recommends the city council approve the proposed three-year agreement with Southland Transit and authorize the interim city manager to execute the agreement. That concludes the staff report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have that.
Any questions from council members?
I have questions. Okay. Kathy, for the previous years, whenever we've entered a contract, it's always been for three years?
Our dial-a-ride agreement has traditionally been three years with two one-year extensions, and the reason for that is there is a capital outlay, a capital expense to purchase vehicles that they amortize over a period of time.
Okay, and then at any time, we can?
There is a thirty-day cancellation clause in our contract.
So I guess, I appreciate the staff report. It's so much easier now to be able to compare both things. I think my frustration lies in the fact that even moving forward, if we were to go with Southland, is that, I know there's initial outlay, and that's why we go with the three years. It seems since we entered the contract on July first, two thousand eleven, the first time we actually, you know, started looking at concerns from the residents was as early as July twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve. So we extended the First Transit contracts for two consecutive years with consistent problems, from looking at the staff report, recommendations from commissioners, town hall meetings, residents. So I understand that the frustration from the residents got to a point where they didn't know what to do anymore. And I think my concern is even moving forward with whomever we go, what safeguards are we going to put in place for our residents that, say, Southland doesn't perform? Are we going to wait two years?
And I would be glad to address those, Councilmember Sternquist. There were a couple, and there are no excuses or reasons. I will be honest, though, the RFP that we issued the last time around was not very specific. And so we didn't ask a lot of the hard questions or get the detail that we probably should have. We've been going off of previous RFPs and really didn't have a whole lot of problems with previous providers. There are always some issues and concerns with any dial-a-ride program in any city, and I think everybody will tell you the same. The first year is, with a new provider, is always a learning curve for both the dial-a-ride riders and the new provider. So the first year, we figured we're just, you know, issues, we're trying to hammer out in the first year. Because the contract references the RFP and the proposal, and it wasn't real specific in regards to vehicles, in regards to a lot of different areas, it made it a little difficult to deal with the issues that were coming up on a regular basis. We also, in my opinion, we bent over backwards trying to address the issues and concerns. We had several meetings. One of the things that the Parks and Recreation Commission asked was to have more than just one meeting, an annual meeting, which we used to do, which is why we had two meetings that one year. And we found, you know, initially, we weren't sure if it was just, you know, people that weren't understanding the system, were not making the reservations the right way, or if there really was a problem. And it took us a little bit of time to really get to the meet and find out that there is a problem. And then we met again, city manager and myself met with them, and asked them to come up with recommendations to take care of these problems, because they were getting very much out of hand almost. And I think several council members received emails and calls and complaints last year around this time. And so we did that, but what happened was, because these things weren't in the contract, there was an additional cost to the city that the city was now picking up. We thought, we wanted to give that some time to see if those implementations, they implemented the computerized software program, they added a new suspension system in one of the vehicles. So we're trying different things to see if that would take care of the problems, and we kept finding that they were not taking care of all the problems. And so even though it was a period of three years, we did not extend any agreement, it was a three-year contract. We could have put them on notice and started cancellation proceedings, but the way the contract's worded is, we need to give them an opportunity to correct the problems, so we would have had to be continuing to extend it.
So is that same wording in the proposed contract with Southland?
I believe so, I believe so. With that being said, though, this has been a learning experience for, I believe, staff as well, and we will not wait as long as we did if we have similar problems in the future, because it has been a difficult situation for at least the last two years with the continual complaints. And you heard some of the frustration earlier, and this is not the only individual that we have heard similar complaints from. And so we believe that it was necessary to issue an RFP at this time. We were hoping we would get more than two bids, but we didn't. But we do believe that the bids received are adequate. I don't believe we need to rebid it again. But we do have, I believe, a good company. The city did contract with Southland Transit several years ago, in the late nineties into, for about eight years into the mid-two thousands, and did not have nearly as many complaints as we do now. I did give you a comparison in the staff report. The number of complaints received over a year usually is about ten to twelve over a year. And as I mentioned earlier, we have fourteen just in the first three months of this year, and this is the third year of the contract.
Kathy, I read all that. I just wanted to ask one more thing. I'm just out of curiosity. Did our commissioners ever recommend to not extend the contract?
We advised the commissioners at their last meeting that we were going to be issuing an RFP, and one of the reasons we were going to issue the RFP aside from this was that to wrap up the fixed route study, we needed to get cost to operate that program, and so we were going to issue an RFP irregardless. And so we notified them at the last meeting that that would be happening. We also notified the community members that were at that meeting that we would be issuing an RFP.
But I meant prior to, you know, the last six months, was there ever a recommendation with the information brought back from the residents to not continue with?
There was not a recommendation from either staff or from commissioners to cancel or start the cancellation proceedings with First Transit.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before I go to some speakers?
I just have a follow-up to what Councilmember Sternquist brought up about the termination. I would defer to our city attorney, but in my view of looking at section twenty, termination of agreement, either party can terminate with thirty days' notice for no reason. So what were you talking about? You were saying that?
That was my mistake. I thought the previous one said that we needed to give them an opportunity to correct, and I believe this contract then has been changed.
Yeah, there's no language on that.
So that wasn't the case?
No, it's thirty days, you're out, unless there's for cause, and you can get out immediately. But either party can terminate with thirty days' notice, so if it's not working out, you look at something else.
One other follow-up question to Councilmember Sternquist's question about complaints. How do we know how many complaints we're getting? Is there a ticket system like a lot of company IT complaint? Whenever somebody calls a certain number, it will automatically generate a report? Do we have something like that, so that we know we're really getting a clear picture of complaints?
Most of our complaints are called in via the telephone or the individual stops by the building. We don't have a ticket system per se, but we do send emails to our dial-a-ride provider every time we do receive a complaint with the, and we have a complaint form, with the information that has been provided, asking for their follow-up, and we do have records of those emails that we keep, and we did review, go back and review those for the past four or five years.
If a resident called the company itself, we wouldn't know, would we?
We would not necessarily know that if they called the company themselves. My understanding is, from what was said at the last meeting, that they keep a track of that. We did ask for that information after the last meeting, because we had not received it, and they provided it to us. We checked, verified that against the complaints we had received, and all of the ones they had, we had received, but we had additional ones that were not on the list as well. So I believe they are caught both ways.
Moving forward, are we planning on, let's say, having a readily accessible page or hotline or something on our website, so that residents can easily, or riders can easily let us know?
Yes, I believe we do have one now. We did implement that, I believe, within the last six months, where we asked dial-a-ride members to provide both positive and negative comments they had. So they can do that on our website currently, but we can certainly work on improving that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we have two speakers that have signed up to speak. I'd like to call Jesse Roach up first, if I could, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bloom, and council members. My name is Jesse Roach, Region Director of Operations for First Transit. I am very disappointed, we are very disappointed in staff's report tonight, for obvious reasons. We believe that we have done a number of things to improve the operation itself over the last two and a half years, working with staff. Unfortunately, we apparently have fallen short, and we feel that, we sense that. And we have made strides in our efforts to improve customer service as it relates to feedback from citizens. Again, obviously, we've fallen short. We've offered a proposal, we would love to continue to operate the service for the city of Temple City and the residents of Temple City, and to continue to work on those efforts. We believe a number of those concerns are related to the equipment issues, which the prior RFP was not specific on the type of equipment that they desired or wanted for the citizens, and so, in essence, the equipment somewhat became a downgrade to the prior operator, unfortunately. So we had to kind of fight that battle during the course of our services. In any case, should the council deem that it's in their best interest to award the contract to Southland Transit, we respect that. We will most certainly do everything in our power to work with the city and with Southland Transit to ensure a smooth transition in service, if that is your choice. Further, and last, I'd like to thank the council and city staff for the opportunity that we have had to serve the city of Temple City and the residents for the three years that we would have been here. With that, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roach. Second speaker is Scott Transu. You'll have to give me your name.
You're close, Transu.
Transu, okay.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Scott Transu, as Carl mentioned. I'm the vice president and chief operating officer of Southland Transit. We are located in El Monte, California, just a couple cities away. While we are a local operator, we retain the accessibility for staff. However, we also have the experience and the expertise of a national operator. Some questions about a new company coming forward and taking over the service. As Kathy mentioned earlier, we did operate it for about eight years, so we are familiar with your city. Additionally, we also, just to give you an example of some of the projects locally that we've had for a while, we've operated the city of Arcadia since nineteen seventy-five, we've operated the city of La Puente since nineteen ninety-four, the city of Pico Rivera since nineteen ninety-four, the city of Alhambra since nineteen ninety-eight, and the city of El Monte since two thousand and one, and also Rosemead since two thousand and eight, and L.A. Metro's contracted operations since two thousand and eight. So these are cities and transit entities that have put their faith and confidence in us and have gone with us throughout the course of contract renewals. Vincent, your question about complaints, actually, we have developed with other cities a standardized complaint tracking form, which goes out over a year, which we can share with city staff and operations at Southland Transit, and it can be updated and sent in with the month of the report each month, so that way there's a clear, consistent way of tracking the complaints, and we'd be happy to make one up for the city of Temple City, just like we did for the city of Alhambra. That's all I have. I just want to come up, introduce myself, and if there's any questions, I'm available to take them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Transu. Okay, anyone else care to speak? Mary, we already have yours unless?
I have five minutes. That doesn't count. This is fifteen minutes. There's some idle minutes.
Okay, Jerry, you want to come up first, please?
Okay. That's why I did that at the beginning, because I knew I was going to dig all the time. I heard what he said.
That's double-dipping, Mary.
Triple-dipping, because I love, Mary lives on my street.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I just had a few quick questions. How many vehicles are actually designated to Temple City, and is there signage on there, of course, that would be that?
There are three at the peak times, and they are all designated with Temple City Dial-a-Ride. However, each provider, every contract we've had, does have backup vehicles in case one or more of those is out, and so there have been occasions where there are unmarked vehicles in Temple City if they are the backup ones. But there should be three marked Temple City Dial-a-ride vehicles.
Are they basically the same three vehicles all the time?
They should be, yes.
Okay. And if they are GPS-equipped, would you have the capability, let's say at Parks and Recreation on Live Oak Park, to track their?
Yes, we do.
Movement?
Yes.
You do?
We do.
Great, okay, good.
Surprised you.
Yeah, surprised me. I didn't think that was possible.
Except it doesn't work on my computer.
Yeah.
But other staff do.
And in your chart, you designated the minimum number of callers for First Transit, but there wasn't any minimum for Southland, and I'm wondering, is that because of the various cities that they handle, or?
They have, and I believe both facilities, but I believe Southland has a centralized call dispatch for several cities, and I don't know how many, Mr. Transu can probably answer that question better. I don't know if they designate a certain amount specifically for Temple City, or if they are all covering all the cities. I can't answer that.
Okay. And my last two items, would there be like a get acquainted type of meeting with the people that will be using the service? And would they be willing to give free services, let's say for two weeks, as a get acquainted offer type of thing?
Again, I can't answer that. We could certainly, and it certainly makes sense, to have that type of a meeting, and Southland Transit has indicated, or indicated during the interview process, which my understanding anyway, was that they would be willing to come out and meet with the community, they would be at the summer concerts or wherever we asked them to be, and would provide that meet-and-greet type of forum, whether they would offer free transportation, I can't answer that.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I yield my thirty-two seconds to Mary.
Ms. Saskar, city attorney, is that allowed? Okay, three minutes and thirty-two seconds.
He watches, he watches C-SPAN, he knows that they can do it, so.
I didn't know you could do it. That's pretty cool.
Mary Kokako, Temple City resident. I can't believe the first speaker, all lies, and I can take an oath with our attorney to say what he said is wrong. Councilman Shavis, do you remember, it must be around two years ago, you were at Live Oak Park, I remember you there, we had a group of people, that was about two years ago, people were complaining, they had our Parks and Rec up there and them. If you remember that, all the complaints, that was about two years ago. I've been to all the meetings where people complained. How many times I called Debbie and complained to her? It's more than twelve times since this has been going on. I don't even bother to call it anymore. It's the same old stuff. People that ride the dial-a-ride, when I'm on there, I said, "Don't call dial-a-ride, call the city and complain." A lot of them don't want to do it, they're afraid we won't have everything, they're elderly, and as far as, I don't have a computer. I do my stuff by calling you guys. I have my phone. A lot of the seniors at the senior center, they don't have computers, they're not going to know what's going on. You know who my backup is, and you should pay her for dial-a-ride number two? Janice. How many times she has come to my? How many times she has come to my rescue because I couldn't count on Dial Ride. And I can't believe what that guy is saying. Jose was still here. I had a meeting with him. And he told me what he wanted them to do. That's about a year and a half ago. They still haven't done it. Now they're promising you the world. They don't deserve a contract for a crappy job for the last three years. Believe me, the drivers are horrible. We have only two good drivers. The others, like I told you, they'll drop you off. I'm having trouble walking. They couldn't care less. We have two. They come down and put my bag on the thing. They make sure I don't walk backwards. The steps are... The last year, I've had my problems, and I can't count on them. My first five minutes, nobody answers the damn phones. They get stuff wrong. The drivers don't show up. And these are complaints that I hear from other people. Then when I call, "Oh, we forgot to pick you up." If it wasn't for Janice, believe me, you should pay her as a second Dial Ride person. She bailed me out so many times, or I would have been stuck. My family works. They can come and get me. So, thank God for Janice. And believe me, don't give the old company a reward for what they did. I've been to all the meetings two years ago. Debbie, and I can't even, I had two shots before I came here at the doctor's office, so I'm kind of shaky, but you know what I'm getting at.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, thank you very much. Janice, thank you for being a good friend. Okay, is there anyone else who would care to speak on this item? Okay, I'd like to close public comments. Council comments. Council member you?
May I just want... I'm sorry. I have a, I just want to ask the Southland a question, if I may. I think one of the complaints we got before from residents or users of Dial Ride was that somehow the bus showed up, and either they missed it by a minute, or they could see the bus leaving, or the bus couldn't find them or anything. And if they, you know, most riders today do have cell phones. If they call your number, would you be able to get hold of the driver and say, "Well, the person that you're supposed to pick up is actually, you know, at the corner," or whatever? Do you guys do that?
Absolutely. I'll make mention that we also operate the access service in the San Gabriel region. So, we have about 150 vehicles doing specialized disabled transportation. And what you're referring to is kind of what's called a no-show in the industry. That's a common issue that happens on day-to-day. If somebody was there and the driver could not find them, the driver is instructed not to leave until they clear it with dispatch. So, when a passenger were to call into the main phone line, before that driver would leave, the dispatcher would get a hold of that driver via the radio and instruct them where they're at.
But let's say if they were, the driver is only a block or two away, would they circle back just for...
Absolutely, because it's easier to just circle back and pick up that individual than to leave that person stranded and then have to come back a couple hours later, so...
Exactly.
Definitely.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
I think the difference, you have 16 passenger vans, but are those ever used to capacity?
They probably will not be. The reason why I proposed those was because in the RFP, there was also the fixed route stuff that we're talking about. So, when I was going through the proposal, the idea was, you know, I think you probably have some services on your Dial Ride that are unproductive, that we can probably fine tune for you like we've done in other cities. And that would free up some money for the fixed route. So then, when you put a fixed route in eventually, if you have that same vehicle on Dial Ride and on a fixed route, then you can kind of use them interchangeably.
Well, I was going to ask, would there be cost savings to go with the eight passenger van? Because it doesn't seem that fixed route is going to be anytime in the near future. But if our passenger vans, obviously, they're going to use more fuel because they're larger, and we don't need 16 passenger vans, would there be cost savings to go with the eight passenger van?
Yeah, there could be, or there may not be. It just depends. There's really not a big difference in price. We'd be happy to look at it, you know, going forward. You know, we do use out here on access, we use what's called like the minivans. And those seat six passengers. And so, that is a tighter fit for passengers. That's something we could look at. They're much more economical, much more efficient, easier to get in and out of neighborhoods. But as I said, if there's a fixed route coming down the line, it might be a better idea just to have that 16 passenger vehicle ready. So then, if you did some transition of Dial Ride service to fixed route, then you could do so. But I'd be happy to look at the eight passenger. The eight passenger Type 2 cutaway bus is really not that much different than the 16 passenger bus.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Askara, any comments? Mayor Protem?
Right.
I'll wait till Mary stops talking. Thank you. Well, I was one of the ones who asked for more information at our last meeting. I want to first thank staff for getting us some more information. I think that, at least in my mind, I have a clear basis for staff's recommendation. I also want to say in fairness to First Transit, I think anytime you provide service to the public, there are going to be complaints. You know, I provide service to the public, I get complaints. Everyone who does that, I think, gets complaints. And, you know, I thank you for being here tonight. It's not easy to take criticism at times, but, you know, it's, over the years, I've heard good and bad things about the service. There's no question about that. I think that the bottom line for me, though, is that, given staff's report, and especially the... I believe that they've done their due diligence. I like the rating system that was utilized by staff and our commissioners. And I know that those who looked at this have a lot of experience in this type of matter, and I thank them for the work that they've did as well. For me, the advantages of STI over First Transit outweigh the increase in cost. And perhaps there are other ways, as council member you mentioned, of looking at maybe lowering those costs, as well as council member Sternquist, and maybe looking at the different types of vans. So that's something maybe that staff can work with whoever the provider is in the future. I get the sense from the report and from what I've heard tonight, and a lot of the things that are mentioned in the comparison chart, that STI seems to be a little more reactive, or a little more proactive, where First Transit seemed to be more reactive in their service. And what I mean by that is, is it seems that STI is more willing to give their recommendation on how to do things perhaps better, rather than relying on the city to tell them what we need. And after all, I think they're the professionals. I like the fact that they have a local presence. The translation provided, I think, is a big plus for our city, and the online reservations. Also, I think one of the things that was brought up by Mary is that they were willing to add additional lines and call takers when that's needed, and that seems to be needed at some times. So, for me, you know, I just see the advantages of STI at this time over First Transit, everything being considered equal.
Okay. I'd like to thank both STI and First Transit for proposing on the project. And with that, I will entertain a council motion.
Mayor, before you entertain a motion, I just have a recommendation for council. It seems that quality of service and response to complaints, the number of complaints, is a fairly big issue. I would recommend that you write something specifically into your scope of services that addresses that. You're just authorizing the city manager to finalize the form of the agreement. So, the form that's attached isn't final. And my apologies, I don't have the RFP or the response here, so I don't know if it's covered in the response. But I think that some simple language that would require a monthly report on complaints received, the responses, and how long it took to give a response to each one of those complaints, along with either a quarterly or annual service review between staff and the service provider, would give you some comfort that this issue is being looked at in the future. And should be pretty simple to write into the agreement.
Okay. Who wrote this agreement up originally? Did we write this agreement up?
Which agreement?
The agreement is before us.
This is our Form Consultant Services Agreement, or Form Service Provider Agreement. So, the real meat of the terms would be in the RFP and in the response. Because those are, those were all your performance criteria were going to be.
But the RFP isn't binding on this agreement, is it?
The way staff's written the agreement up, they've incorporated the RFP and the service provider's response to us into the agreement.
Really? I didn't see that anywhere, but...
It's on the very final page in Exhibit A.
Oh, okay.
You certainly could take all of the salient performance criteria out of the RFP and the proposal and put them into an integrated scope of work. That's probably the cleanest thing to do.
Yeah, that seems a little convoluted to combine the two documents. You would think that you would want one document to encompass all those things.
One is always better.
So, your recommendation then would be, at this point, to go back and revise the agreement then? Or rate based on your recommendation, or add some additional language to that? Or approve it based on adding that language?
I certainly think that you should approve it based on the additional language that I recommended. I do think that you might want to have the city manager review the scope of work and the statement, I'm sorry, the proposal and the RFP, to see if they need to be integrated. I haven't seen those documents, so they might be crystal clear as in terms of operating requirements and what they're going to be doing. And if they are, then you probably don't need to merge them together. If city manager and his staff think that it would help them and the service provider to know exactly what's expected, to merge all of those and put them into one document, then of course, that makes sense. But in my view, that's something you can delegate to your staff to do.
However, if I may, Mayor Protem, I think it's pretty typical for the cities to use a standard form of contract and just amend the scope of work. That's pretty typical. Instead of merging the two and also referring to the proposal submitted by the...
No, I agree. The proposal doesn't have, the contract itself doesn't have to change. The scope of service is actually on Exhibit A. That's probably what we'd want to work on, is the Exhibit A portion. And just, I see where it does encompass the request for proposal. It seems that that is not as specific as what you're talking about, I guess. Although, we would have to go back and look to see if that was in the RFP, which, at this point, we don't know if it is or not.
If I may, Mayor, oftentimes, and Kathy can elaborate, as per the RFP, we build in performance criteria, cost per hour, cost per ridership, response times and things. So, if we included those in there, did we, Kathy?
Well, I think we were talking about this complaint, I think, is what they were...
Right, right. We could add the complaint part, but the performance measures are in there, and those would become a part as an attachment. So, we would have those things. We can beef up the other language in terms of the complaints. We can't change the criteria, though. But we could ensure that those, their proposal, which is, as council member you had indicated, is oftentimes in public agency, that becomes an attachment to the contract. So, we basically are saying, "Okay, here's your proposal. We're holding you to that. That becomes part of your contract." So, but we can merge those, or we can certainly, in a bit of a, ensure that those things are properly part of the contract document, so we can use those to evaluate performance.
Okay. With that, does somebody want to bring a motion forward?
I would propose the motion that we award a three-year agreement for services to Southland Transit, Inc. for management and operation of the C's Dial Ride program, and authorize the interim city manager to finalize and execute the agreement in an amount not to exceed $1,209,705 over the three-year term, with the condition that, per our city attorney's recommendation, look into the language regarding the scope of services, specifically regarding complaints and handling of complaints.
I think, just one adjustment, the number, if I remember, is...
It should be 1,002,905.
I'm just looking at my agenda.
I apologize. Those were transposed.
So, it's 1,290,007,05. We almost made some money there. 1,290,705.
Here's the motion. Is there a second?
Sir?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, this item 9A is unanimously approved. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for coming here. We now move to item 9B on the agenda. 9B is the adoption of a resolution establishing the Temple City General Plan Advisory Committee, known as the GPAC, and the adoption of the advisory committee bylaws and appointment of members to the advisory committee. Have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As part of the general plan update process that the city's recently embarked on, the staff is proposing creating a general plan advisory committee. And the real purpose of the GPAC is to facilitate public participation through this update process. Also advise staff and the consultants on issues raised at the public meetings. And then finally, this body will make a recommendation to the Planning Commission and ultimately, the city council on not only the updated general plan, but also, as we're calling the Route 19 Village Specific Plan, which really encompasses the area surrounding Rosemead and Las Tunas, as well as an updated zoning code. As proposed by staff, the GPAC would be up to 13 members. When staff looked at size of a committee, we wanted to be able to provide a good cross-section of the city and get diverse interest involved, but we didn't want a committee that was too big. I've been involved with general plan updates where you have 25-member committees, and they become very unwieldy. And so, we were trying to get a big enough committee that we could get that diversity, but yet, still keep it reasonably sized. As proposed, and as you'll see in a minute with the people that are recommended for tonight, we're including both residents and business owners. The members proposed are involved in a variety of different activities and organizations in town. We really went out and went through the Citizens Academy and the people who have been involved in that to really get sort of that next generation, I guess, that next set of residents involved in the city, and really started there to really develop who we're recommending for tonight. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but there are 10 people.
I thought there were nine. You have 10?
There's 10 now. Council member you asked Mr. DiMarco to be added to the list. In addition...
By the way, his name's spelled wrong on your report.
Oh, I apologize.
It's G-U-Y.
Okay.
He's not French, I don't think.
Sorry. I apologize. In addition, Ken Nolenberg contacted the city clerk's office today, expressing his desire to be involved as well. So I wanted to make council aware of that, if council's desires to add him to the committee as well. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the GPAC.
Does a business owner have to be a resident?
The council can set up the committee any way at once. There is no requirement that every member of a general plan advisory committee be a resident. A business owner would obviously have an interest in what happens with the city.
That's what I would think.
Yeah. So, some cities want all residents, some don't. It's entirely up to the discussion of the council.
I don't even think that's issues even in the bylaws, about residency.
No.
It's on our report.
It's in your report.
Never mind.
I just want to make a clarification. Mr. DiMarco wasn't my suggestion. It was, I think, was the mayor. I think my, actually, I suggest that Ms... I think my, actually, I suggest that Ms. Betty Kwan, an attorney. The name is not on here on the list.
I did not, okay.
I think I email that to our city manager.
Yeah, I apologize.
She's down at the bottom, second from the bottom.
Oh, that's a...
That's Beverly.
That's Beverly, though.
No, that's...
Beverly's a civil engineer. This is, Betty is an attorney.
Right. I remember receiving that from you. I thought I forwarded it over.
Yeah.
K-W-A-N, wasn't it?
I think K-W-A-N.
Right.
Is this, can I, I'm sorry. May I ask me? This is something that, if I recall, that was started by Mark Priscico, correct?
Yes.
And I recall that he had come to all of us individually and asked for some names from each of us, and I think we all provided some names.
Correct.
And so, I'm assuming that the names that we have on this list were selected either from that list or other sources.
He started with a list of about 20 names that he had received from all of you.
Well, that was my next question. Were any applicants turned down? And if so, why?
No.
What was the criteria for selecting? Just somebody who would wanted to be on it or...
You know, unfortunately, I was not privy to how he was originally looking at people. I know he met with quite a few to gauge their interest, and I think it was more to see, one, if they were interested, and, two, if they would be available for about the next 18 months to do it.
So, he probably had a whole list. He contacted all of them and some of them probably said, well, no thanks.
Yes.
And these are the ones that have already been contacted and they do, they have expressed an interest and are willing to work. Is that on this?
Correct. Yeah, once he had left the city, I went back through and everyone who he had marked down that was interested, I confirmed with them that they were still interested and wanted to be involved. So, that's where the final number came to.
So, the list I have in front of me as an attachment C, it looks like there's two, four, six, eight, 10 people on that list. And that's what, I think it's the same list you have up there. But then I hear that there's maybe one or two additional that have an interest or that refer.
Betty Kwan that Councilmember you has recommended.
Okay.
And then the question of Ken Nolenberg.
Oh, Ken Nolenberg.
Okay, if there aren't any more questions, I'll open it up for public comments. Anybody in the public care to address this issue? Going once, going twice? Okay, we close public comments. Are there any additional questions or...
Do we all have to be in agreement with this list or how's that going?
Well, there, we need to have a list and then take a vote. We're voting on several things. One is the establishment of the committee first, the adoption of the bylaws, and then the appointment of the members. So, those are the three items before us. Do you have any comments?
I'm still thinking it through. Obviously, I mean, not obviously, but I would not be in agreement with all those folks. But if it's important to one of you, then I'll respect that also.
Okay.
It seems that we're kind of moving towards, at least in this, I guess ultimately we're all going to decide, but it's almost like we're each choosing people to be on there, which is kind of unique to what we've done so far. This is a lot different from the process that we've utilized, let's say, in forming commissions or other things. It's almost like we've each said, okay, here, you, you know, we've each proposed names and those names are now on the list, so...
I haven't proposed any.
You haven't even proposed any, so...
No.
To me, the first question when I saw this list was, wow, where did this list come from? I had never heard of it or, I mean, it's been a while. Last I heard of this thing frankly was when Mark was here and asked me for a few names, which I gave him, but...
Didn't Don send a reminder on it?
Probably, but you know, there's a lot of things that we have in there. And then the question for me is, well, how many people? Okay, we have 10 now. I've heard two more names, so that's 12.
Well, he's suggesting 13.
I know you're suggesting 13. I would prefer to have an odd number only because of the voting or the, I don't know that that's important on this, but I don't know. I'm just a little uncomfortable with the way it was put together. It seems like it was just not, it's just different than what we've done so far.
Well...
And should we have established the ground rules or how we were going to do that before we have people on the list?
I don't think it was clearly coordinated.
Okay, I guess one suggestion is that we address the first two items.
Oh, I had another question, I'm sorry. Were the, Eric, have you reviewed the bylaws? I mean, are there any questions, legal questions or, I mean, obviously it's a legal document, so...
I have not. I've seen the resolution.
Okay, so...
I've scanned the bylaws as part of the agenda preparation.
Greg reviewed them.
Greg reviewed them?
Oh, he did, okay.
And he didn't raise any questions.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that somebody took a look at them because, you know, the bylaws are a legal document that will be binding on them.
And I will note, council, on your last question about the members, you're not bound by this list. If you adopt the resolution tonight that adopts the bylaws, the bylaws simply say that the council's going to appoint between seven and 13 people. You can do it however you want to. So, you can form the committee tonight, and if you want to continue to talk about it at your next meeting and bring in people or interview them, that's completely your discretion.
Well, I know many of these people on the list, and I have no problem with all those that I know. Some I don't know. I'm a little reluctant to name someone to a committee who's going to meet, although in an advisory capacity, without having some background on them, who they are, what they do, or what they've done, and perhaps why they qualify for an appointment to this type of committee. Like I said, some of them I do know, and those that I recognize, I think, probably would do a very good job, but there's probably at least half on this list that I have no clue who these people are. Maybe they are great, I don't know.
The only thing that I was told was that when Mark went through the process, he tried to find people that I believe participated in the Citizens Academy, who had shown some inkling or some involvement in some previous way with the city and therefore the thought that that interest either being involved in that organization or that activity, they would be someone who might be committed because it's going to be a long-term sort of involvement. It's not just a couple of meetings. They'll have a lot of meetings and over the next couple of years, so... But that's all I was told, is that when he looked at that, he tried to look at people who had shown some interest in involvement or background.
He also tried to get, to put people that weren't commissioners already or hadn't recently been commissioners so that we have this extra voice out there.
Well, sure, I think that's a good idea.
So, those are, my understanding when I was trying to pick this up was those were the two areas that I know of.
You know, my observation is other public bodies that typically appointments are made by electeds or if they have staff, they're staffed, but not usually by our staff or by the staff. I'm just saying.
Well, again, this is just a recommendation. They're not actually, I don't think staff is saying, appoint these people.
But the staff can...
Right, well, they put together a list for us.
Okay, if I could make a suggestion, maybe we address the first two items, the establishing of the general plan advisory committee and the adoption of the bylaws as one action and then decide how to proceed with the members is the second action. I would entertain a motion if anybody's so inclined.
I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 14-4983, establishing the Temple City General Plan Advisory Committee, GPAC. I like that name, by the way. And adopt the bylaws for the GPAC.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion is unanimously carried. We now have to deal with the appointment of members to the GPAC. And could I suggest that staff come back with some more background on these people? I think our concern is that we're seeing names and that's all that we're seeing. We know some of them, but not all of them, and I think it's important to do that.
Can I assume that we're open to any other nominations in the meantime, that this isn't all of them necessarily?
We haven't made any recommendations yet, so I would say yes.
How would those people, oh, so you would propose that we would give staff those names and then...
I would call him and say, would you put Tom Chavez on the list?
And I'll decline, but, yeah.
You can.
So, then I guess it's up to staff to contact them to find out a little bit more information.
May I suggest staff develop perhaps a simple form so they all fill it out and then come back the next time so we all have a chance? Because there's probably unrealistic to know actually all 13 people. So, I know some of them, just like you know some of them, and so, but we have a, some kind of a...
Statement of interest.
Resume or statement or something that we can know.
Do we want to like interview any of these people or, no?
No.
It's advisory in nature anyway.
But it's an important job. I mean, they're going to be meeting quite, it sounds like quite a bit. They're going to, it's going to be important person. Well, I was thinking maybe an ad hoc committee or something to do that, but I don't know. I mean, if you guys want to just get all the applications and then talk about it in an open hearing, I'm okay with that.
You have a point, because this is a long-term committee.
You know, it's what, two years minimum?
Probably about a year and a half.
Okay.
How frequently do they meet?
How often are they going to meet?
There's going to be times where they're meeting probably once a month, and then there'll be gaps as, sort of as the process goes, you'll start and you have the visioning process, and they'll be involved in that and the public workshops for that. And then as the consultants take that information and develop the draft plan, there'll be a gap of time where there's not much really to do.
And was all that explained to each of these individuals to your best of your knowledge?
To my understanding, yes.
Okay, but it could be that maybe some of them weren't, because you haven't talked to everybody on this list.
I've talked to everybody on the list.
Oh, you have? All right.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? I mean, for commissioners, there's an application they do. Maybe we use a similar, you know, application process, you know, where they give us what we ask for from other people. And your suggestion, maybe we put an ad hoc together to identify, to go through those and come back with some recommendations.
Well, of course, it would only be necessary, we know that we can, the bylaws already provide that we can appoint up to 13 people. If we only get 11 or 12 applications, then it's not, I mean, I suppose we could say, well, we want only nine of those 11, but if we get more than 13, then obviously somebody's going to have to go through them and perhaps weed them out for want of a better term, how we do with our commissioners, because, you know, we get numerous applications for commissioners. We don't interview every one of them.
Personally...
But again, I'm fine with, if we want to get those applications and then at a future meeting, come back and we'll go through them up here on the dais, if that's your pleasure, I'm okay with that. I don't, I'm not jumping to get on another ad hoc committee, that's for sure. We certainly have enough of those.
Why don't we do it in two steps? Do that first one, let's get the applications, let's look at them, see if there's any issue where we need to go back to an ad hoc and sort of ferret this out a little further.
Can I suggest, my, I sit on the Foothill Transit, and I'm a governing board member, and to be on the executive board, you fill out a very simple statement of interest form. And it's two paragraphs, and it's very easy to read, and I'd be happy to forward that blank thing to Don so you can share. It's, I think you can summarize very well on that form, and it, it's easy to read, it's not the resumes, because some of those applications we get from commissioners are...
Books.
Books. I personally am not going to read them to that extent.
Maybe we tell them it's got to fit on the, it's got to fit on the form.
One page, yeah.
Yeah, one page.
One-page form, no additional attachments.
I mean, and I didn't recommend to anybody here, but I can see at least six people that I'm more than comfortable having being appointed. I'm sure some of the people that I know, you might not, and you know the others. I just think we're making this process a little bit too lengthy and especially since Jeffrey's already spoken to them, Mark was comfortable with them. They've been involved from Citizens Academy.
Well, we don't know that all of them have been involved with them.
No, they all have it, no.
Most of them.
Some of them have, yeah.
At least, I think while Mark was here, he actually sat down and interviewed them more than just a phone call.
Okay, why don't we proceed getting the, getting the applications, then keeping it to one page so they don't give us that. We'll review it at that time and see what we have, and if we need to proceed with an ad hoc, we'll look at it next time around.
Would you like the ad hoc that's already established to look at the commission appointments, or can it be the same? Can you just add duties to that one since we only have two?
Sure. If the two of you would...
Eric says no.
No?
I have a form for an ad hoc.
No?
Ad hoc are single-purpose committees.
Okay.
So, I guess we'll just do it that way.
Let's just do the step, we'll decide next time whether we do an ad hoc.
Yeah, because we may not have that many.
Because I don't, I don't think we're critically, from a timeframe, have to move forward on this. We're still getting ready to hire the new community development director, and so we've got a little bit of time, I think, before this is going to fire up.
And the consultants are still finishing up the background report, so we do have some time.
Okay. Why don't we do that by next meeting if we could have that? Is that appropriate?
Yes, I think that we have a little bit of time. As I told you before, we're very, very, very close to hiring someone, but it'll take a while for that person to start, so I think we have some time, because realistically, we won't have this on your May 20th agenda. I tell me, it'll be in June, but I tell me, get letters out. If I may ask also, Mr. Mayor, one other quick question. Is it, I understand that you're not interested in us soliciting initial names. We have 12 now, so do you want us to open it up again or what, other than sending this form out and asking the 12 people that have expressed interest to fill it out and send it in, or do you want us to open it up, ask for more? Do you want, do you want the council members to submit additional names just to...
See, that's what I was a little confused about. I don't think it was ever really advertised.
No.
It was, these were handpicked peop...
Right. We had, we had eight, and then I sent an email to the council members after you continued your last meeting, asking each of you if you wished to nominate a name or knew of another name, and I received, I think, three names from that process that put us to 11, and then the person from the school district or school board called today to make it the 12th. But it was never actually advertised, I don't believe.
Well, at the time, I think Mark, Mark's idea was, because I asked him, I said, why don't you ask us for names? And he said, no, I think the process would better serve with staff as a little, staff, because staff wanted to have a cross-section of the community, because, so involving businesses and other folks. So, he only needed a few names from us. He didn't want us to supply all the names at the time.
Although it's hard to tell from this list that we have a cross-section, because we have resident listed eight times. I don't know what a res, we know they're a resident, but we don't know what else they do.
Yeah.
I think we need more background. So, I guess there's two decisions we need to make, whether the process we have with these names is good or is the city manager has said whether this opens up and we basically ask for applications to apply. So, I'm, I'm open going either way.
How about a suggestion? We'll send the letters to 12. This is a public meeting, it's on television, and let's assume that people that are interested might be watching this or hear about it, and if someone submits another name, a person expresses interest, we'll give them the form, fill it out, and give it to you.
Okay.
But we won't actively recruit. Or if a council member wants to submit another name, you could do that as well.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep. And, Mr. Mayor, just so it's, so it's on TV and, you know, you call me, Jeffrey Starnes, I'm the planning manager, at the city hall number, or email me at G-Starnes, G-S-D-A-R-N-S, at templecity.us.
Okay, and then this will come back to us probably in June?
Yes.
At the earliest?
Yes, June.
Okay. Okay. That's item 9B. Okay, we're now to item 10, new business. Item 10A, approval of the First Amendment to agreement to CLS Landscape Management, Inc. for landscape maintenance services on Rosemead Boulevard. Is there a staff report on this one?
There is.
All right.
But there's not a PowerPoint. Councilmember, CLS Management, Landscape Management, Inc. has, currently provides landscape maintenance services for the medians throughout the city on a contract basis, specifically along Santa Anita, Baldwin Avenue, Lower Zusa Road, by Home Depot, Las Tunas between Muscatola and Sultana, and the small island located on Broadway at Encinita. The agreement with CLS continues through June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. With the Rosemead Boulevard improvements nearing completion, within the next month hopefully, the issue of the maintenance of the medians needs to be addressed. Subsequent to the staff report being written, we found out that the contractor may be required to maintain all landscape areas for a maintenance period, once the city has issued a notice of substantial completion. However, it's not clear how long that maintenance period is. It could be from ninety days, or it could be up to one year. However, with that being said, in order to be ready to take over maintenance when it is needed, the city requested CLS to provide a bid for weekly maintenance of the medians, planters, and parkways along Rosemead Boulevard. The weekly maintenance would include weeding, trimming, and mulching, as well as trash pickup and irrigation checks. Plant replacement, if needed, and irrigation repairs would not be included, and would be provided by city staff or the contractor at additional cost. The bid submitted by CLS for one day per week service is two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars per month, two-day-per-week service would be double that, or forty-two thirty per month. At this time, the council is requested to amend the existing agreement for landscape maintenance services with CLS for the remainder of their agreement term. The First Amendment would be effective at such time as the city becomes responsible for maintenance of the landscape areas, and we would issue an RFP next spring to coincide with the expiration of their contract. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, I understand there's two, two options, one is the, uh, once a week, and the other's twice a week.
The, uh, we receive bids for two options. Our recommendation at this time is to amend the agreement for the second, well, for both options. So, the city would determine at our, our own sole discretion which option to enforce.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to open it for public comments. All right, Jerry.
I have two questions, I'm just wondering, would they be responsible for the curb, cleaning the curb area, since a street sweeper cannot get in there? And the second thing is, any idea what this is costing?
Yeah, two thousand a month. Are you talking about the maintenance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Roughly two thousand a month, twenty-one fifteen per month.
Oh, that's not too bad. I thought you were gonna say three hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's just for specifics.
But it does not include, it does not include the cleaning of the gutters, the curbs and gutters, the sidewalks, strictly landscape.
I see. Well, speaking of that, though, who's responsible for cleaning the gutters, then, if nobody can get in there to do it?
My, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Hi, Jerry, my name's Robert Sahagan. And that would fall under the Public Safety and Services Division to clean the gutters and the bikeway, and that would be provided by Athens Services.
Really?
Yes, sir. And that would be with a truck that is seven feet, no more than seven feet, that would, it's a sweeper truck, that would drive the bike lanes, and would be included as part of our street sweeping.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jerry.
Mr. Sahagan, no extra cost?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, any other public comments?
Just wanna add to that, when we designed Rosemead Boulevard, we did talk to Athens about the maintenance and trash pickup.
I have to, I have to quantify that answer with the fact that, um, Athens typically, for street sweeping every year, raises their rates, so it would be at no extra cost, in addition, no additional extra cost from the costs that we already budgeted for, and that would be proposed to you as part of the fourteen fifty fiscal budget.
So, it wouldn't be an earmarked, uh, cost, however, their contract may increase a little overall.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, any other public comments? No, no, closed public comments? Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
I'm just wondering one thing, uh, who insures those guys?
Who insures them?
Yeah.
They have to provide insurance for the city as, yes.
'Cause it seems to me, working on a street like Rosemead, it would have some...
That's one reason why we're recommending it be contracted.
And the insurance that they provide is reviewed by the city attorney's office as part of the contract to ensure it meets the limits and, and the requirements of the city.
It wouldn't work out there.
Okay, well, that's why you're here.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's actually stated in the proposal in Scobolick, provide barricades and OSHA approval, and then, and all that.
Okay, if there are no, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the agreement with CLS Landscape Management, Inc. for landscape maintenance on the medians and planters on Rosemead Boulevard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one's opposed. Item ten A is approved. We now go to item ten B. This is the acceptance of the bid and award of contract for federally funded community development block grant project for downtown parking lots and Temple City Boulevard accessibility improvements per the American with Disabilities Act. Code's number so-and-so. Do we have a staff report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just quickly. Just quickly, normally this would have been on, on the consent calendar, however, because we had to allocate more money from our CDBG funds, and that required a public hearing, we couldn't approve this until we had done that action. So, with that, FS Construction was the low bid, it was reviewed by the city, city engineers, as well as Will Dan, who's our CDBG consultant, and found it, FS Construction was the lowest responsible bid, and we're recommending approval of, of their contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll open for public comments. Okay, we'll close the public comments, any council questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to accept the bid submitted by FS Construction for the federally funded CDBG project for downtown parking lots and Temple City Boulevard accessibility improvements project per the American with Disabilities Act, um, with the project numbers listed there on the agenda, and we authorize the interim city manager to execute the public works contract with FS Construction.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item ten B is unanimously carried. We now go to item ten C, it's the award of a consultant services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for the preparation of a traffic impact analysis for the Las Tunas Drive Safety Enhancement and Beautification Project. Your staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Blument, council members. In October two thousand and twelve, the city entered into a professional services agreement with Freeman, Tong, and Sasaki, FTS, to prepare schematic and design plans for the Las Tunas Drive and Safety Enhancement Project. After obtaining community input at two community meetings, FTS presented three design alternatives to the city. Option one was four lanes of traffic angled and parallel parking in the downtown core. Option two was for four lanes of traffic, parallel parking in the downtown core. And option three was three lanes of traffic angled parking in the downtown core. At the December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve council meeting, the city council approved option three. In two thousand and thirteen, the city was awarded six million nine hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in grant funds from MTA as part of the two thousand and three Metro Call for Projects program. That, that funding was broken down into two million seven twenty-one eight-six-eight for bicycle improvements, two million nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for pedestrian improvements, and a million two hundred and seventy-six thousand for transportation improvements. The design consultant has recommended the city conduct a traffic impact analysis to evaluate the environmental impact of each of the proposed changes to Las Tunas Drive. This analysis is part of the SEQA, the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act process that is required by California state law. At the direction of the Las Tunas Project Ad hoc Committee, staff issued a request for proposal for selection of a qualified traffic engineering firm. Four competitive proposals were submitted, were received, and staff conducted a review on those proposals based on technical qualifications and cost effectiveness. Staff is recommending an award of consultant services agreement to Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Kim Lee Horn and Associates is an employee-owned, multi-disciplined engineering and planning firm offering comprehensive civil and, civil and structural engineering, traffic analysis, transportation and planning design, and traffic engineering services. They were ranked as the most qualified and experienced firm with most comprehensive scope of work. Kim Lee Horn proposes to analyze a total of thirty-eight intersection and mid-block locations in comparison to the other firms who proposed only to study between thirteen and twenty-eight. Kim Lee Horn also submitted the most cost-effective proposal. Following completion of the traffic impact analysis, the project would be expected to prog- to progress according to the following steps. An environmental SEQA study and final design option approval, preparation of, preparation of design plans, project approval, process required by funding, by the funding program to certify that the project is ready for bid advertisement, E seventy-six, California's approval, bidding and award contract, construction, and construction may be done in phases to minimize business, impacts on the business, and the public. So, before you, the city council is requested to review and approve the consultant services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for the preparation of a traffic impact analysis for the Las Tunas Drive Safety and Enhancement and Beautification Project, and authorize the city manager to execute the consultant services agreement for Kim Lee and Horn and Associates in the amount not to exceed forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And with that, if you have any questions, myself and/or Ali Khyer, the city engineer, would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions or... Okay, if not, I'll open it for public comments at this time.
A little bit of a, actually, but, question. So, um, I look at their proposed, and then they did study, they proposed studying a lot of the intersections and, and, and streets. I noticed that for Cross Streets, well, for East West Street, they studied, obviously, Las Tunas Drive, Carabaldi, and Broadway. Now, would we be able to tell, 'cause some of the people were saying that, well, if you do this to Las Tunas, you may have even more impact, like to even, um, London, Lower Sousa, some of the other, the, um, east-west streets. Now, would, would this study be able to give us that, how that impacts, and more wider impact?
Yes, that's the purpose of the study. We'll analyze the parallel streets and the routes, and locate the existing conditions, existing capacities, and possibly if any traffic be diverted, and how, and the amount of traffic. And it will also compare the physical condition of the street, see if actually people would take that street as an alternative route. As a result, it's going to give you recommendations as to what are the impacts onto any of these streets, and what are the mitigation measures? And based on that, the council will be able to review the project using SEQA guidelines.
Okay. The second part of the question is that it's focused really on the three alternatives provided by Freeman, Tong, Sasaki. And let's say if the analysis came back and they're not as optimum as we would like, would the, this analysis be able to point, perhaps some improvements be made to, you know? It really doesn't include in it looking at the fourth alternative, is it? Fourth option?
Well, this is actually qualitative, qualitative and quantitative analysis of three of the alternatives
Right.
included in the original review. The, the study can't really determine what is the best for the city. At the end, study will tell you impacts associated with each of the alternatives, what are the potential mitigations, and then city council will have to review and analyze, based on that, determine the outcome and, and the final decision.
Well, my question is really, well, let's say they determine all three of them have some issues, and they, I guess this study doesn't really ask them to provide an alternative to mitigate some of the, yeah, I see it.
Well, study will identify impacts of each of those alternatives and provide mitigations for those. And the, the decision still lies with the city council in terms of, uh, accepting which is the final decision.
Okay.
So, what I'm hearing you say, then, is this is going to give us the information to make that informed decision that we didn't have before.
In a sense, yes, because what you had before was what's referred to as to a traffic memo, and even in traffic memo, the traffic is specified that, eh, eh, traffic impact analysis, which is referred to as TIA, should be done in detail in compliance with the SEQA, which is California Environmental Quality Act, uh, requirements, to analyze impacts and mitigation measures for each of these alternatives.
Is it customary that that's done through the process, and we just didn't have it done?
I don't know the background, I can't, I can't speak to that, but it is, what we're doing right now is the procedure that we need to do to go through this, uh, process and finalize all these options, and make sure that we're in compliance with SEQA.
It seems like that should have been done in the initial study. I mean, I know we're gonna move forward, but...
Well, um, I, I think at that time, it was more of a conceptual design, we were trying to, um, come up with conceptual design for the funding application, but since we all seem to agree on moving forward with one of the options, in order to satisfy the California Environmental Quality Act, we will have to go through this traffic impact study. And when council member Viscar and I, on the subcommittee, we met, and we both felt that this study is an important piece that we need to advance to actually get it done before we decide moving forward, yeah. But I just wanna emphasize the fact that this study is really done on the three alternatives that we've seen, that was discussed and proposed and discussed at the community hearing, uh, meetings before. This is not to come up with a fourth or any other, there might be some tweaking that they may propose, but basically, we're just looking at the three options that were, that were discussed.
So, then at that point, we, we can take that information, decide how to move forward.
Right.
Yeah.
In, in the clear light of day, looking at going down to one lane, the back-end parking, and other things, it, it really makes you think, you know, and we probably need more information.
Yeah, the, the original one, you know, we were looking at a window to apply for some funding, we went through conceptual options, that's what drove us at that point, but now it's saying, okay, look, you know, we're getting more serious, let's go down and get some more information.
Well, in retrospect, too, I think we're dealing with the enthusiasm of the consultant.
Okay, any public comments? Jerry, after hearing that discussion, you still wanna get up?
Yes. I think I had all my questions answered, but I, I remember that there were workshops associated with Sasaki, and I'm wondering, is this just information? Or would there be any workshops associated with this report also, for re-input after two years?
May I answer that?
I guess what, my view, when it comes back, I think the ad hoc committee will look at that point and decide, you know, how we move forward.
Gotcha. So no workshops to revisit then?
I think it's...
This is a technical, this is a very highly technical report, will use traffic modeling and things of that sort. Obviously, when the report is prepared, it'll be a public document, and the ad hoc will review it.
I see.
Mr. Jim, the ad hoc did suggest to staff that when the report comes back, that perhaps we should look at a study session with the entire city council, and it, because we followed such a monumental decision, should not be made by just two members of the council, should be done collectively. So there'll be a public forum where you'll be able to be involved.
Oh, that's good. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Mary?
Okay, Mary. Now, you're gonna have to, either that or get Janice to translate for you, or...
I had a doctor's appointment in shots today, so I'm not in the best of shape. But Councilman Vincent, you said, a lot of people have talked to me about that, that the people that live in Temple City, we're gonna stay off Las Tunas, we're gonna use Longdon, Garibaldi, even now, when it's, people coming from LA, they're coming, okay, Rosemead Boulevard, it's wide, you're gonna narrow it down to a little thing. Then you go to Arcadia, why, do you think these people are gonna be going down Las Tunas, slowly down? They're not gonna be looking at the businesses, they're gonna take the size streets and then pick up the other streets. People in my neighborhood said, we're not going down Las Tunas. You think we're crazy? We're gonna go down Woodman and going from Rosemead. They're gonna stay off that. What Vincent is saying is true. All those other streets are gonna pick up traffic. And personally, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish. People coming from LA, driving through Las Tunas, do you think they're gonna be looking where they can stop to shop? No, they're passing through to go home. I don't know if you really, I don't know what you're trying to accomplish. But those cars going through at night, if you're on Las Tunas, you see all this traffic coming through, they're all from LA, staying off the freeway, going that way, that's a shortcut. So this is something you have to, I don't know if it, not telling you what to do, but you better think, are you improving stuff, or are you gonna make it worse for our businesses?
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, I'll close public comments. Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the interim city manager to execute the consultant services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount not to exceed forty-two thousand five hundred and five.
Second.
Okay, there's one other, the recommendation number one is to review and approve consultant agreement. And second was to authorize the city manager to proceed.
Okay, I thought that number two covered number one, but I'll throw that in also.
Okay, it's moved and seconded? All in favor in the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, item ten C is humanously approved. We're gonna take a five-minute break?
I was just about to give you the high.
All right. We'll be back in five minutes, and we'll wrap up this agenda before we go into a closed session.
Or do I have to wait till tomorrow?
There's no other approvals.
It's okay?
Do you have anything to record on?
I can do it next. You know what? What's the date of the next meeting?
That was five.
I didn't even take advantage of it either.
It wasn't the five that goes to fifteen, so it's the real five. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the council meeting. Council member Sternquist wasn't feeling well, so she has to be excused for the remainder of the meeting.
Really?
With that, item eleven is communication, there is none. Number twelve is an update from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I have a few items, and I'll make them brief. First, as you all know, this coming Saturday, May tenth, the Rosemead Boulevard grand opening festival will take place. A formal dedication begins at nine AM, followed by family activities from ten AM to one PM, including a guided bike ride, public art walking tour, scavenger hunt, and live entertainment. And additional information is on the city's on www.rosmeadboulevard.com. On May thirteenth, there'll be jazz bands from Oak Avenue Intermediate and Temple City High School will perform in free concert at Temple City Park beginning at six PM. Bring a chair and blanket for seating. The city will conduct its first budget study session on May twenty-first to discuss the city's preliminary budget for the upcoming fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. It'll be held in the community room adjacent to City Hall at seven PM, and the public is invited and encouraged to attend. I wanted to update you on the mortuary site on Temple City Boulevard. Bids are currently being, have been distributed for remediation services from, for contractor to be hired to remove the asbestos, mastic asbestos and lead-based paint from the building. And we'll be working on the actual bids also at that time when the remediation works going on to, for the demolition of the building. So over the next few months, we'll see a lot of activity over there, which ultimately will result in the building being cleared. And we'll have an item on your next agenda related to the mortuary site that came from the standing committee. And finally, as most people will note, the Longdon Sewer Project, which replaced nearly a third of a mile of old sewer line between Rosemead Boulevard and Encinita, is nearing completion. Contractors working on a punch list remaining items, which should be finished in thirty days.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the Rosemead Boulevard ceremony, has there been any discussion or determination over what the dress code is going to be for us? I understand that there's going to be bike rides and I'd like to know, are we supposed to be riding a bike in our suits, or what's the deal?
I asked that question when I got here, because I was curious about.
And I didn't know.
You're having a meeting tomorrow on that or something?
My recommendation, we've talked about it, my recommendation is that because there are dignitaries that'll be there in suits, that I will be there in a suit, but that the remainder of the council should wear their green, the green.
Polo.
Polo shirts. And be more casual to go on the bike ride. You got a couple they was wearing.
So won't that create a class system? So you mean, so you and other dignitaries will be in suits, but the lowly rest of us will be in polo shirts? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, would you like to be in suits?
Well, I don't know. What are we supposed to be doing?
Well, how are we going to ride a bike if we're in suits?
Do we have to ride a bike? Is that, is that, I mean, I haven't even heard that yet. What is that, what's the bike thing?
Well, there'll be a ceremony, obviously, the presentation on the project. We have a number of the usual Judy Chu, Ed Hernandez, Ed Chao.
Yeah, the same cast of characters, I understand that.
Yeah, they'll be there. There's representatives from other cities that are coming. So they usually show up in suits, so I, I'm happy to all of us be dressed in our greens.
No, I'm not telling you what to wear. I just want to know, are we going to ride a bike? What are we going to be doing?
Yes, we're all invited to ride a bike. Right after the ribbon cutting, there is a, I guess.
Because I was thinking of riding my bike to the event.
Well, that's good.
In a suit?
Not in a suit.
Oh.
I don't want to be in a suit.
Well, we can all, we can all wear our greens.
So you're not going to be riding a bike?
I'm going to be riding a bike.
In a suit? Maybe, maybe you're going to change.
I'll change. I'll change.
We could all change.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't planning to wear a suit. I was planning to wear the polo shirt, because I'll be riding to the site.
Are you going to ride a bike with long pants?
Ah, yeah, because they were, they said no spandex, so.
It's probably a good look, it's probably a good idea.
So, yeah, yeah, I'll ride long pants, yeah.
Is there going to be a, like a published list of things and like times?
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay. That's going to be out like soon?
I think you lost your stuff.
I think nine o'clock is the.
Nine o'clock, the ceremony starts.
No, I know that.
It goes from nine to ten.
And then ten o'clock will be the festivity. And so basically, it'll be two, it's like two dedication type, one for politicians and one for Temple Cityans?
The bike ride.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make sure that everybody gets that tomorrow. I saw, I saw pretty well a draft, or it's being published at this point.
We'll get you information tomorrow.
Where are we going to gather?
South of, they're closing the street of Rosemead on the west side of the street between Las Tunas and the First Light, down by Denny's down there. So it's in that area, there'll be a stage there where we'll gather at that point. So we encourage people to ride their bikes, so.
I think there's a place to store our bikes too, so.
They have a valet parking for the bikes.
Are you guys going to watch our bikes?
No, there's a bike.
They'll be riding.
I'm riding my bike, because I don't have a way to get my bike over there otherwise.
There's a bike group that's going to have a valet parking for bikes.
I can pick up the bikes in my truck if you want.
That's a good idea. We'll work that out. Thank you for offering.
Okay, we can all be in greens if you want.
No, 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 you wear your suit. You're going to be speaking.
Okay.
Just giving you a hard time.
You're the dignitary.
Yeah, class system.
All right. I don't know if I have a green shirt. Do I have a green shirt?
Yeah, everybody does.
He'll wash it for you. All right, let's get serious. Dang, this five-minute break is tough, man. It's hard to bring this group back.
We had too much seriousness with Robert Sahagan.
Yeah.
Got to break it up a little bit.
Okay, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Rosemead Boulevard, we had our standing committee last Friday, basically going through a whole bunch of punch list items, budget items, everything else going on. They're working hard to get it finished. They'll be installing the sculptures Friday or Thursday morning, I think, at five in the morning or something, they're coming in. So the pieces are falling very rapidly in place. I believe they're painting the bridge, they're starting to paint the bridge down at the south side. That's taking place.
Now, the report that I saw came out today from staff, I don't know if I was reading it right, but it looks like a lot of the mosaics and some of the art components are not going to be in by Saturday. Is that correct?
I believe a large percentage of them are in. I think some of them went in and they need to be changed or adjusted. I believe one went upside down and there was some.
I don't have the full report, I apologize. We'll get, I don't think everything is going to be in.
Yeah, when I read it, it looked like there were some things that weren't, but that's expected.
In the area where the celebration is going to take place, those are finished.
How about the lighting and the monuments?
Those, that still has to come in.
That should be done. They're working on it, yeah. The only mosaic that won't be on, will be, will not be ready is the one that on the back of the directional sign. Those would go in, I think, in December this year. But the rest of the mosaic will be in.
The ones on the pavers on the sidewalk are going in, the other ones.
And then Thursday morning, they'll be installing the sculpture, the Mr. and Mrs. Temple City. And then, and then they'll be, and then they will be wrapping. And I think we should begin to notice to when the time, so, right?
Correct. Thursdays, we expect an exact.
Five AM or something like that, so if you're like.
Time's up.
I'll be there. What, I have one more question on the Rosemead Boulevard while you're on the subject. I brought, I've brought it to staff's attention a couple of times, but not to your business' attention. I think you're aware of it though, that in coming down Rosemead Boulevard south on Fridays, Athens has their trash containers parked in the bike lane. And I, has that been addressed or?
I saw them this morning. We, we are, it's on our list to talk to Athens about that.
Yeah, and this is.
We were assured when we're putting this project together, when we met with Athens, that that would not be a problem. So we need to go back and revisit that, I believe.
Are we talking about the, the commercial trash containers?
Yeah, you know, where some of the businesses along Rosemead, they pull them out so that the, the trash truck can come up and pick them up and then dump it and go off. And they're leaving them right there, right, right across the bike lane. And it's not just one, it's like four or five of them. It blocks the whole bike lane.
At, at the outset, there was about twenty to thirty, maybe more, because what would happen is Athens in the past, excuse me, in the past would have a scout truck come by, pull out all the bins.
Right.
Put them in a non-bike lane area, and then the trash truck would come by and pick them up. They have since stopped that. They don't use the scout truck. What we have found, that the four to five actually, we kind of narrowed it down to three businesses, whenever, they've gotten so used to Athens coming by to pick them up, that once their dumpster gets full, they're under the impression that they can put it in the bike lane. So it's not Athens' doings, it's going to take some reaching out to the businesses to let them know that they can't wheel it out of their enclosure already and block the bike lane, and staff is doing that, and we're going to meet, staff did receive direction from city manager Pennman to meet with Athens, so we can get a meeting of the minds and see what kind of outreach we can collectively work on in order to remediate this problem.
Yeah, because it seems like it's about four of them. Last couple of Fridays, it's, it's been the same one.
When it, when it, when Rosemead first got with the dedicated bike lanes, I think we had close to thirty one time out there, Ali. So Athens is no longer doing that, it's more the businesses now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There's a number of things that's, obviously, you're going to have to get used to, the changes and adjustments and some of the landscaping we're looking at. I mean, it's not in cycle yet at this point, and you know, we're talking about, there's some sections, if you go out there, it looks like weeds at this point, but you know, it's in, it's in the cycle. We've talked to landscape architect and the stuff that's spiking at this point, it's unusual to spike, it's the green stuff at the bottom that blossoms out, so their advice is you got to wait for the cycle. Same with some of the, some of the trees, they don't know whether they should leaf out in green leaves or get rid of their old leaves yet, they're just out of cycle and out of sync. The advice is they've got to go through basically an annual cycle.
Is that because of the weather we've been having?
Yeah, a combination of things, the, when they got planted and, at least that's the advice we're getting at this point.
And some, just the time that take, it takes to establish a plant, usually takes two, three years. So, and I think, actually, on the, on the subject of weed, and I think we want to advise folks that live near the parkway, to leave them alone, to give them time to grow instead of, you know, be, and we appreciate the good intention of trying to be good citizens to help out, but those are not weeds that we don't need anybody to pull them out at this point.
Well, you know, in defense.
That's what I thought they were.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so did we all. We asked the question, how come we got weeds out there?
Well, you know, defensive staff and, and those that are working on the project, it is overall very impressive to drive down Rosemead Boulevard. I think you can certainly tell when you enter Temple City and when you leave Temple City, there's no question. So I think, you know, you have those little glitches here and there. Overall, it looks really nice.
Vince, do you know offhand, how many of those trees we put in are London Plains?
Most of them. Most of them. And.
It's a little scary.
Yeah, yeah, I know. There's also one other piece that people need to know, that even though the grand opening is May tenth, this coming Saturday, we'll be continuing doing punch lists, which is like small detail work, so, because the actual contract's not finished until for another three months.
The punch list is complete.
The final completion is about three months away, two months away? Yeah, so, so we'll still be seeing some people doing work, even though it's after the May tenth.
Okay, any other questions on the Rosemead? Okay, school district standing committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Bloom and I met with the committee members from the school board on April twenty-ninth. A few items on our agenda, one of course was the update on the Safe Route to Schools project, which we've heard earlier this evening, Mr. Sahagan gave us a good analysis of that, and those are the items we approved on items F and G tonight. We will also provide an update on the school bond measure, given some information, which I will leave in the council chambers on, on the oversight, citizens oversight committee report and the things that they're going to be working on sooner than later. We're still talking about getting a joint school, school board, a joint council school board special meeting. We're working on a date, probably, tentative date probably will be towards the end of the summer. And another issue was the civic center project. We're still trying to gauge the district's interest in participating in the civic center project that we've talked about over the last few months, so more to follow on that. And then lastly, we opened discussion regarding our parks and open space master plan and the thought of establishing a committee to recommend how the master plan can meet the district needs as well as the city needs. And so I know Kathy was present, and we'll be working with their, their staff over there to see if we can put together a committee to kind of blend the two and see how we can help each other in that regard and follow up on the recommendations that were made in the open space master plan. That's all I have?
Okay.
Yes, you have a question?
Yeah. Well, it's a report from a different committee, but it ties into exactly what you were talking about. Council member Viscara and I on the Facility Public Works and Infrastructure Ad Hoc Committee. And then we talked about the mortuary site and also the primrose properties that we have purchased. And we have discussed with staff and the recommendations to bring back to the council for at least consideration for some directions from the full council as to what we need to be doing to these properties. And some of that involve actually the very thing that you were talking about, Mayor Protem, of possibly using some of these sites as parks and other uses. And then I think the direction is to come back, staff come back, give a report, and perhaps we will go out and have professionals help us to do some preliminary design and some conceptual design and also conceptual cost estimates. But there's, because there's so many options out there, so the first step is bring back to the, to the council for some directions, is the which way to pursue.
Good. Okay, the strategic plan implementation standing committee, we've been getting information from the consultant on that, they've been working on the report. We have a meeting tomorrow on that one. As we have, our first meeting with the Budget Ad Hoc Committee will be tomorrow afternoon also. Okay, the commission application review ad hoc, I guess there's a couple people that came, I'm not sure if you guys have decided how to do that yet.
Well, we just really got the list.
The names, yeah.
Of, of names and I, I think council member Sternquist and I just have to decide how we're going to approach it.
Okay.
And the issue is that there's only one additional person for each committee.
Same person, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Familiar name, too.
Any other, any other reports? Okay, if not, we'll go to council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Before council member Sternquist left, she asked me to remind everyone that on May twenty-first, so it's the day after our next council meeting, at ten thirty AM, the Temple City Library will be hosting the monthly meeting of the LA County Library Commission. And she's encouraging as many people as can to, to come to that meeting. And it's a good opportunity to, for them to see firsthand the issues we have with the library, so she's, anybody out there, if you're, you're free at that time, she's encouraging you to show up. That's on May twenty-first at ten thirty AM at our library. Okay, council member Viscara?
Um, real quick, just some of the, a couple of the things that have been happening with the COG. A segment of the two-ten has been selected between Pasadena and Duarte as a pilot for Caltrans, and they're, they're calling it the Connected Corridors Pilot Project. It's going to be a high-tech thing to, to be able to tell drivers about delays and accidents and things like that and alternate routes. And this is going to be probably the first of many to come, so it should be interesting. So that's underway. And the other thing that, that's, we're, we, the COG are supporting, in fact, it's really in place now, remember the PACE program? Part of that was the HERO program. We had somebody come and talk to us, and that's where, for, for anybody that doesn't remember, if you want to put solar on your roof, you can do it, you get a loan, and then you pay back over a period of time through your property taxes. Well, we've now identified Fig Tree Financial, which will be providing, I guess, the upfront money. And so that, that program's well on its way, and you can all get solar and increase your property taxes a little bit. So those are two of the significant things we've been working on. Beyond that, I think that's it, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Council member you? Mayor Protem Chavez?
Just a couple things real quickly. Last week, I attended a, I guess it should be a kind of a tutorial on water called Water One-O-One, put on jointly by the Upper San Gabriel Valley Water Municipal, Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District and the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. Very informative, talked about the water issues in our San Gabriel Valley. Fortunately, we don't have too many of them right now, we're, we're pretty well set as far as water's concerned, but there could be some issues in the future, depending on, of course, rainfall and everything else that's affected. But it was a good overview, and they did have a good informational booklet, which I'll put in the council office, information resource guide of different things, where our water comes from and, and the sources and the contact agencies and things like that. Also to let you know, there's a, San Gabriel Valley Water is offering a tour of their facilities. The dates are May twenty-second and June twenty-sixth. If anybody's interested in, in going on that, you can contact me or, or City Hall will have information on that. It takes you around to the different facilities and service areas up to the dam. It's a pretty interesting, it's about a one-day, you know, tour, it takes about a whole day to go through it.
Is it the same one we attended?
It's the same one that we did when we went up to the big dam, and they take you around in a bus, so if anybody's interested in that. Also, I just want to take a shout-out to Robert and his staff and those involved with our neighborhood cleanup this past Saturday was down in my area, and I have three happy neighbors who have now new trees in their front yard, and hopefully they'll water them. I'll make sure to remind them that they, they need to water them, but they look good so far. But it was a good job, looked like people were bringing the trash out. I didn't see a dumpster by my garage, so I asked them to put one there, but they didn't. But, but otherwise, it looked, seemed to be a very good success. So when's the next one, do you know? When the next one's coming up? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm sure we have one coming up in the future.
We do, we have the next one coming up in August.
August, okay.
August.
Great. All right, well, could, you know the area?
It's on the north side.
Okay, that's okay. It's on our website, so.
We're spreading the wealth, yeah, I don't know the exact area.
That's all right, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
No problem.
We don't need you very much on the north side.
Yeah, right.
In some areas, we do.
Okay, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, two things, again, as Mayor Protem on the neighborhood cleanup, I know council member Sternquist and myself, we're down there for part of the time, and staff is doing a good job working with the, with the neighbors down there. The other thing I'd like to report on, I went to county sand district meeting, and there's some legislation moving through the state legislature that has to do with the green waste credit that we get in our cities. And, and that's to meet some of the requirements. The air quality management district is saying that that is creating methane, which is screwing up the air quality, so they're proposing that the cities no longer get credit for green waste. So it's, anyhow, there's legislation moving through, debate going on, you know, AQMD would say you don't get credit for it, and yet we're saying, hey, you want to recycle the stuff, so anyhow, just be aware that there's some legislation.
You think you're doing a good thing and?
Yeah, good things only last so long until somebody else says, wait a minute.
It's not a good thing.
It's not a good thing. So, so that's, that's out there at this point, we need to watch that, because that could have an effect on us. And I think the other thing, if, if you heard the Supreme Court ruling yesterday or the day before, basically said that the LA County Flood Control District is responsible for all the pollution in the ocean, directly responsible, and you know that's going to get handed back to all of the cities, and that's a big price tag coming down at us. I mean, so it's a big, big issue. I know they've been trying to address it, but they were hoping the Supreme Court would not point it directly at them and say, you built the facilities, therefore you're responsible for all the ocean pollution, so, big issue. Okay, item fifteen on the agenda, reimbursement of expenses to city officials for conduct, conduct of city business and for city payment of conference expenditures, that is all listed there. Item sixteen is a recess to successor agency to the Temple City Community Redevelopment Agency. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Agency member Sternquist is absent. Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Travis?
Here.
Chairman Bloom?
Here. Okay, item three is the consent calendar, we can approve all of them in a single motion.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Sec.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimously carried. Unfinished business, item four, none. New business, five, none. Number six, communication, none. Public comments? Anybody have any public comments on the successor agency? If not, public comments are closed. Update from the executive director and agency counsel, there is none. Matters from agency members, none. Closed session, none. We are adjourned, and we are now back to the regular council meeting. Actions taken by the city of successor agency to the Temple City Community Redevelopment Agency, there is none. We're now at item eighteen, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Jerry, my gosh.
Making up for last time.
You get a bingo on that one. This is IMG eighteen, yeah, pretty close to a bingo.
I'd just like to remind the citizens of Temple City and also the council that the Miss Temple City Pageant is tomorrow night at seven o'clock at St. Luke's Church, and it starts at seven, and it's going to be a great event. I kind of saw the previews of it last night, and it promises to be a good event, so.
Are you sure? I thought it started at six, is it seven?
No, seven.
Seven o'clock.
At least, that's the word I have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jerry, for bringing that up. I'd forgotten about that. Okay, any other additional comments? Public comments are closed. We now go to item nineteen, we have a closed session, so unless everybody wants to hang around, we suspect we'll be in there for a little bit. We'll have a report out by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. City council met on item nineteen, it was their conference with a labor negotiator. They just received a briefing from labor negotiator with regard to potential labor processes with the new employees' union, our Employees Association. That's the only reportable act. concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned until our meeting of May twentieth.